Thanks.
Counsel.
I'd like to add affordable housing on a closed session, please.
Affordable housing enclosed?
Yeah, thank you.
You want to bring that up when we have the closed with our C A O? Thank you. Somebody move the adoption of the agenda? Counselor Gomana? All in favor? Any corrections or amendments from the February eighth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of counsel? If none, someone move the adoption of amendments. Counselor Evans? All in favor? Okay, proclamations. Seventieth anniversary of the Pembina Cardium Field. Pembina Cardium Field seventieth anniversary, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Whereas in nineteen fifty-three, the Pembina Oil Field was discovered about one hundred and thirty-three kilometers southwest of Edmonton. And whereas this field, the largest stratigraphic oil trap in Western Canada, with the exception of the oil sands of the McMurray Foundation, quickly surpassed all others and became Alberta's largest oil field. And whereas two companies, Seaboard Oil and Socony Vacuum Exploration Company, united together and began exploring for oil. And whereas drilling began on February twenty-third, nineteen fifty-three, and June tenth, nineteen fifty-three, the well began to produce oil. At the time, the technique used had never been successfully applied in Canada. The odds were not considered favorable. However, on June tenth, after completion of the procedure, the well began to produce. And whereas Socony Seaboard Number One was the first Cardium Well in Alberta and the first well drilled in the Pembina Oil Field. And whereas the Pembina discovery had a tremendous impact on the future of oil exploration and the region. And whereas the town of Drayton Valley is celebrating the seventieth anniversary of the discovery of the Pembina Cardium Field with a townwide celebration on June twenty-third and June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Therefore, I Deputy Mayor Bill Bellis, on behalf of the Council of Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as a seventieth anniversary of the discovery of the Pembina Cardium Field in Town of Drayton Valley, dated Town of Drayton Valley, Province, Alberta, this twenty-third date of February, twenty twenty-three. The next proclamation is Pink Shirt Day. And I see everyone's got their pink shirts on. I would like to recognize that today is Pink Shirt Day. Pink Shirt Day is celebrated on the last Wednesday of February each year. People wear pink shirts to signify a stand against bullying. Approximately one in five kids are bullied, forty-seven percent. Forty-seven percent of Canadian parents have at least one child that has been a victim of bullying. Around one-third of the population has experienced bullying as a child, and around one-third of teenagers have been bullied recently. Bullying is a growing problem in the world today, and every year people hear of more and more incidents coming up regarding bullying in schools everywhere. And although it's certainly a problem within schools, bullying doesn't stop there. It extends to the world outside of school and even to the virtual world of the internet where young people have created a bit of world of their own. National Pink Day is the day dedicated to beating the bullies and breaking the cycle that creates and perpetuates this damaging behavior inside and outside of schools.
Deputy Mayor Bellis, it's interesting, excuse me, that it's Pink Shirt Day and I don't notice it on the agenda, but the proclamation obviously was out there somewhere. And so I'm curious and would have been interested in wearing a pink shirt today, but I'm the only guy that nailed it down. And so I missed the memo and I hate to miss the memo if it's a red shirt day or pink day. So just thinking about communications from here on in, we should try to either draw it to the, because I did read the agenda. And so.
Yes, we had already discussed maybe putting it on our calendars for next year. So we had a little more forethought into it, but yes, I will make a note of that.
Thanks, Silver.
It was an oops? Thank you. Okay, move on to six point one. Non-statutory public hearing, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three discretionary use development permit, D V twenty-three dash zero zero five, Twenty Fifty-Fiftieth Street Eating Establishment and Drive-Thru. And this is Mr. Connors.
Thank you. If you could just read in the start of the public hearing, please.
Okay, thank you. I declare the public hearing open for development permit at nine oh nine A M. Development permit application, D V twenty-three zero zero five. Present is council, administration, and those online. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments, concerns, and questions from the public regarding the proposed discretionary use of a drive-thru with a newly proposed establishment eating and drinking at Twenty Fifty-Fiftieth Street. Background. Administration received a development permit application to allow for a new building containing an establishment eating and drinking with a drive-thru attached. The property is Zone C Gen, Commercial General District, where drive-throughs are considered a discretionary use. Discretionary use must be decided by the town council, acting as the municipal planning commission per land use bylaw section one point one three C. A decision on this application will be made today depending on the comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been provided in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley bylaw, twenty eighteen oh seven A, Electronic Advertising bylaw. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received, written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. Administration will read out any written submissions received. Any written?
Good morning. So pertaining to today's public hearing regarding discretionary use request for development permit, D V twenty-three zero zero five, to allow for a drive-through use in conjunction with a new build establishment eating and drinking at Twenty Fifty-Fiftieth Street, administration has received no comments back from the public, neither in support nor opposition. Administration is aware of some online public excitement around the proposal, with interest and speculation in knowing the brand of the establishment seeking to open on site. Per conversations with the applicant, requirements under A P P I Professional Code of Practice, Schedule Four, and advisement of our FOIC personnel, the specific brand of the eating establishment in this proposal was opted not to be released as it is outside the scope of the decision before you today. The land use bylaw regulates the use, not the user or specific brand, and the decision is on the permitting of a drive-through in conjunction with an establishment eating and drinking. Administration's comments on the proposal will be delivered as part of the subsequent decision item pertaining to this application. Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the floor? Any comments from anyone online? Seeing as there is none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Move on to the next item, seven one. R C M P delegation acting staff Sergeant Ryan Hope Meyer. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, everybody. So I just have some quick stats for you today. So we go to the one with the green and the red. So these are our January numbers. Now, keep in mind that January, we're only now comparing January this year to January of last year. But we had a nice down month in January, actually. We saw a decrease in our persons crime, which was way higher for our twenty twenty-two. Now, it's just a quick snapshot, but instead of having like seventeen occurrences last January, we had only eight. And then our overall criminal code calls went down by seventy-one percent. So we actually were a lot slower in January, which was nice, actually, for the way kind of twenty twenty-two was. And it kind of continues the trend. We really saw in October that our crimes stats started to drop, October, November, December, and it's just continuing that trend. So it's a good trend. There's no guarantee that it will continue, but we're hopeful and we're trying to stay on top of stuff so that it does. The only thing that's up a little bit is still our theft unders. That's still our kind of motor vehicle thefts, people going around at night checking doors. So it's not theft of vehicles, they're still down, but just our theft from vehicles. And there's some shoplifting, actually. We've had a bit of an increase in shoplifting as well from our Canadian tires, Rexall, Walmart. Just low end, you know, twenty, thirty-dollar shopliftings, but they get to court as our theft unders. So that was our January. It was a nice January. All in all. Any questions about that?
Thank you. I see you have a guest.
I do. I brought somebody with me. I've been doing that the last couple of times. This is Constable Izzy Sanford. Izzy has been here for about a year and a half. He comes to us from Mississauga, Ontario. So, and this is his first spot.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah. And that's personnel update. Our corporal, who's one of our general corporals who's coming, has been named. His name's Roderick Johnson, and I talked to him last week. He's hoping to be here within thirty days. He's coming out of Red Deer detachment. So we should have that spot filled the next thirty. And our staff sergeant that's coming, Troy Raditz, he has his house for sale in Spruce Grove right now. So he's hoping to get that sold and get here. He's hoping April, so we should have some reinforcements fairly soon.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Evans?
I was just wondering, is there any particular reason that you folks are aware of for the decrease, other than your hard work?
I think it's, it's, as I said before, like especially property and motor vehicle thefts. It's really dependent on the offenders who are in custody and are not in custody. Now, unfortunately, we have had a couple that just got released in January, so I'm curious to see what our February numbers are. Couple of them are already on warrant and we're actively looking to grab them. Yeah, our crew team's going to be here in the next couple of weeks as well, looking to scoop up a couple of these guys that we've identified doing crime already and stealing some cars. So we're hoping to grab them, but yeah, that's it. And then persons crime is so hard, because as I, I think I've talked about that before, how it's usually a crime of emotion and in the moment. And so I don't, I don't have a real reason for why the person's crimes dropped. Yeah. But the property, especially the vehicle thefts, that is who's in custody and who's not.
So you're taking no credit since you became acting?
That's right now. I would love to.
Any other questions? Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Morning. You mentioned about shoplifting, like you're saying, you know, it's a small amounts and, you know, it's a headache for the business owner as well, right? So is there any tips or tricks that you can give for a business owner that, you know, how to handle something like that?
Yeah, it's tough, like.
It's taking your time, going at your time and all that.
The tips I have is make sure you have good surveillance in there. And then I know loss prevention officers cost money, but if you're a bigger store, like Walmart has one, if you're a bigger store, then that's usually pretty, pretty effective. I mean, often you can pick off the people that are in your store wandering aimlessly that might be looking to shoplift. And I know Walmart's pretty successful in that with their loss prevention officer. So investing in a loss prevention officer might, you know, save you, even if some businesses got together and had it on a cycle where they would have somebody together would be advantageous. And the other thing is don't be afraid to confront people. I mean, you can refuse business to anyone if you feel that they're not there to purchase. You can ask them to leave, so. But, yeah.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, good surveillance and willing to follow through with charges at the end of it. It's helpful.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor McGee?
Good morning, Ryan, and welcome, Izzy, to the team. It's a bit cold, but it gets better. Two questions I have, Ryan. The first one, following up on Counselor Gomana's question about shoplifting. Do they ever get to court? Or is it that crime of opportunity, those things that, I'm just curious whether or not they actually get there?
Yeah, at times they do and at times they don't. Our Crown Prosecutor obviously has the ability to make decisions and he carries the whole caseload and he decides what goes and what doesn't and has complete, like, that's completely out of our hands. That is completely in his hands and they have, and her hands. So they have the opportunity or the ability to just clear and just say, I'm not prosecuting that, even if there's evidence. And sometimes they do, just because of court time.
Right.
And to be honest, there's certain things that prosecutions, like the self-checkouts, prosecutions do not like that and do not like to prosecute that, just with the, there's some case law around that that makes it tough with. You know, there's the person that scans half their items, but it's, it's tough. Yeah, so those things are tough. But, yeah, not to speak for the Crown, but we do see that those low-end shopliftings are the first ones that will get moved off the books because there's, yeah. If they have other priorities, then those go without.
And generally repeat offenders?
Yep, yep, one hundred percent.
Okay. The second question I have is, as we move into minus forty, do we specifically at the R C M P do anything different? We've got sort of four or five days. So do you, you have that Monday morning meeting and say, listen, we're heading into this cold weather. Here's what we're contemplating.
Yeah, we don't really do anything different. Not a ton, like maybe a little more patrols at night, but not a ton. In fact, often we see crime go down when it's cold, just because it's cold. But, yeah, we don't do a ton different. We will, the guys and girls will be running around quite a bit at night, but the town's kind of set up, especially with our homeless population, to shelter them now anyways through this, through cold snaps. So we don't do a ton different. We might lodge people a little quicker, I'll say that. We pick somebody up, we'll probably take them. If they can't go to one of the shelters, we'll take them to shelter them with us and just hold them for a little bit, but that might be the only difference.
And if you found someone at midnight, at forty below and the shelters close at eleven, the next obvious might be just to curl up at your house.
Yeah.
Not your house, but.
Yes, not my personal house, but yes. Yep, yeah, one hundred percent. Yep.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Yes, exactly. I don't think my wife would enjoy that too much.
Thank you, Ryan.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ryan, for your report and look forward to you continuing in your role until such time as the new person arrives. So you're doing an excellent job, and we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
No business arising from the delegation? Okay, we'll move on to our decision items. Nine one, Enforcement Services Annual Report. Cording.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm pleased to present to you today the twenty twenty-two Enforcement Services Annual Report. Firstly, I'd like to express our gratitude to administration council, who have supported us in new initiatives throughout twenty twenty-two. And without the continued support and trust, we would not be able to accomplish what we did throughout the year. Our team has worked diligently throughout the year and we have accomplished several noteworthy projects that I believe has benefited the community, the organization, and the department. We've also had a few challenges this year, including rebuilding the department, having reduced staffing for over five months of the year and navigating priorities of the organization. Our team has also continued to focus on improving our services to the community, and we have always find ways, or we're continuing to find ways to make improvements on how we do business within the Enforcement Services Department. With that said, I'd like to get into a high-level review of the Enforcement Services Annual Report. Nathan, can we go to the next? So we start off the annual report with a message from General Manager Tom Thompson. Just talking about high level of what the department's been up to, some challenges throughout the year, different opportunities that the Community Enforcement Services Branch has been up to, and what Tom's biggest view of the department. I think a positive movement that we did throughout the year was the incorporation of the new Community Standards bylaw, where we've been able to have a lot of traction and movement with cleaning up some properties throughout the community, so. Thank you. So to get into the purpose of the annual report, so through the Peace Officer Act and its regulations and policies with province, all authorized employers, including Town of Drayton Valley, are required to submit an annual report to the province by January thirty-first of every year. So that is the main purpose, is we have to do it through legislation. Now, normally, a report to the province is four pages tops and you can be done. When looking at doing our annual report for the year, we decided to be a little bit more transparent, be more open to the public. And instead of just doing a report to the province, let's do a report to the community. What did we do in the community? Let's showcase ourselves, let's showcase what we've done in the community. So through that, again, going back to what the province requires, they require us to describe the general nature of the services, describe the enforcement and related activities that the peace officers are involved in, name and contact information for primary and secondary contacts, any statistical data, and the peace officers that were employed during the time. So like you said, their information could be pretty basic, so four or five pages. We want to get more in-depth in this report. So as we continue, quick information about our community. So just shy of seven thousand people as of twenty twenty-one. We have nine schools and we're approximately one hundred and thirty kilometers from Edmonton's capital. About Enforcement Services, we're comprised of both community peace officers as well as bylaw enforcement officers. We strive to improve safety and the quality of life of our residents and visitors by observing bylaws and provincial statutes violations during the execution of the officer's duties. And we're committed to serving residents and providing professional service in the fields of enforcement. We do our duties with honesty, integrity, and diligence while striving for consistency, fairness, and impartiality that leads to the community to voluntarily comply through education and enforcement. We work with our other law enforcement partners, nonprofits, and other departments to accomplish this. It's important that Enforcement Services does not investigate or respond to criminal code matters. That is the responsibility of the police of jurisdiction, so the R C M P. If we do get any calls for criminal code matters, we do refer them back to the R C M P, as we cannot investigate those whatsoever. There's a couple aspects of the Drayton Valley Strategic and Corporate Business Plans that more so pertain to Enforcement Services. Firstly, it's the community cleanup, beautification, and standards. And secondly, the safety and enforcement and community policing enhancing the sense of well-being and to attract businesses, immigration, residential developments to the area, et cetera. So services provided by Enforcement Services. We have approximately twelve different provincial statutes that Enforcement Services has the authority to enforce. So that ranges from the Animal Protection Act, the Gaming Liquor and Cannabis Act, the Traffic Safety Act, Trespass and Premises Act, et cetera. When we get into municipal bylaws, we enforce any enforceable bylaw that is enacted or amended by council. So some examples of those are the Animal Control bylaw, the Community Standards bylaw, the Fire Service bylaw, the Traffic bylaw, et cetera. Throughout twenty twenty-two, as I previously mentioned in the preamble there, we've experienced some staffing challenges throughout the year, where the department operated at fifty percent capacity for over five months. So that was in January and February prior to my attendance. And then again, in October, November, and December, we've been short with the other officer. So this reduction in staffing has greatly reduced the amount of proactive work that the department is able to do, as well as when it comes to engagement with the community, it's definitely reduced the amount of engagement that we can do as we are at limited staffing levels. Further to that, as of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, the Level Two Community Peace Officer Appointment for our other officer, the province has removed the ability for those to be operational. So the Level Two Peace Officer Authority as of December thirty-first is now gone. So now we currently have one peace officer and one bylaw enforcement officer. As council may recall, we did get approval for, in the twenty twenty-three budget, for an additional peace officer position, which we're actively recruiting for. So hopefully in the next little while that that person can come on and our staffing levels can increase. And subsequently, our proactive and community engagement and stuff like that can increase as well. So throughout the year, both myself and Officer Megan Kennedy were the officers that worked with Enforcement Services. We report directly to the General Manager of Protective Services, Tom Thompson. We work within their statutory requirements for the peace officer side stuff through the peace officer policies, legislation, and then our own internal policies and procedures. And on the bylaw side of the house, work within the confines of the Municipal Government Act, the Bylaw Enforcement Officer bylaw, and internal policies and procedures. Between Megan and myself, we have over thirteen years of experience in law enforcement and investigative roles in private sector municipal government and provincial government. So when we do a look back into twenty twenty-two, there's been a lot that's happened throughout the year, especially with Enforcement Services. Some of the changes that occurred, just as a recap for, some council might remember this, some might be new to them. We created the new Bylaw Enforcement Officer bylaw. There was the creation of the New Community Standards bylaw. There was the completion of the Enforcement Services Satisfaction and Priorities Survey, the creation and the use of a dedicated Enforcement Services Facebook page. We implemented a new records management system and new processes and controls to ensure proper usage. We added emergency response to the Level One Community Peace Officer authorities. We added high, primary highway enforcement, so that's Highway twenty-two. We participated in the Community Safety Committee. We started to use electronic ticketing. We took over enforcement of the We Control Act and the Agricultural Pest Act. We began managing Travis permits. And we began using as, with the rest of the organization citywide. So in addition to those, we've been able to assist other departments, such as Planning and Development, Public Works, to review different bylaws, to make sure that they're as effective as possible. We've provided some comments to them prior to coming to council. We've also worked with Alberta Transportation, Public Works, to ensure that there's proper signage throughout the community and on the highways, to make sure that they're complying with applicable legislation, that they're not causing confusing messaging, stuff like that. We took the lead in the creation of the Closed Circuit Television Camera Report, which eventually was brought forward to council through the budget process, where eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars was allocated towards that. And on behalf of the Town Enforcement Services, took lead and applied for the Alberta Crime Prevention Grant. Hopefully, we'll find out within the next month on if we were successful with that. Through that grant, we, our approach with it was creating a safer community. If we are approved, we will be approved for up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four towards initiatives on improving safety in the community. If the grant is accepted by the province, some of the initiatives that we identified through there were enhanced patrols in the community, community presentations, training, additional camera equipment and monitoring, safety surveys, purchasing of electronic bikes and equipments for patrols on the trail system, and advertisement amongst others. As I mentioned, we should find out probably within the next month on whether or not we were successful with that. In addition, twenty twenty-two, we spent over forty-one hours conducting patrols in school zones, just shy of nine hours conducting patrols in playground zones, and there were twenty-two, over twenty-two hundred Travis permits that were issued. When we get into some community engagement, we participated with Terry Fox Run at the Eldorado School. We attended the welcome assembly at the H W Pickup School, had some visits to the fifty-five seniors' club, the rodeo, light-up parade, grade twelve. the rodeo light up parade, grade twelve parade, a couple of the community dinner street parties and attendance at some Thunder Hockey Games. In addition, we've became more involved and provided more information to the community by using our social media channels. As council may recall, we completed the Satisfaction and Priority Survey. In the summer there, it was three weeks. Advertised through various modes and we ended up receiving a hundred and sixty eight responses. Some high level information about that, some issues facing enforcement services, speeding, more enforcement, more staffing, unsightly properties, snow removal, any comments or suggestions on how to improve or any additional priorities. They were looking for transparency, deal with barking dogs, hire more staff, more presence, more visible in school zones. When we get into what should the priorities be for enforcement services over the next couple of years? We categorize the top three. When you combine the themes, the top three were traffic, unsightly properties and animal control slash animal protection. So those were the three priorities of the respondents. And lastly, understanding that enforcement services was tax support, tax supported, which would you most likely support? Forty one percent wanted an increase in enforcement, fifty percent maintained, and seven was decreased. So that information has been very useful on administrative side on kind of planning some priorities, determining next steps, stuff like that. When we get into satisfaction of the department, fifty five percent were either satisfied or very satisfied with the department. Fifty two percent were satisfied or very satisfied with customer service that they received. Sixty four percent were satisfied or very satisfied when it comes to response in a reasonable amount of time. And forty one percent were satisfied with how staff were doing everything to our sister needs. So again, that last one, definitely the forty one percent, definitely some room to improve on that one. So we're still working on hopefully getting that up in the future. So a quick overview of our enforcement services, social media that we implemented there, it came into place April of twenty twenty two. It was meant to increase transparency and increase our access to the public and connect with residents, businesses and visitors more effectively. We worked with communications to implement this program. At the creation of this report, there were over seven hundred and fifty followers. We've added at least another hundred to that since. Through twenty twenty two, we were able to reach twenty eight thousand, just shy of twenty nine thousand people. And we had just shy of six thousand people that clicked on our page to learn more about enforcement services. So in my view, that's definitely very positive when people starting to learn what's going on in the community from the enforcement services aspect. And we like to put lots of stuff on there on some education so that people can voluntarily comply with provincial statutes and municipal bylaws. If they don't know something's a law, it's hard to follow it, right? So if they know something such as sidewalks need to be shoveled within forty eight hours, better chance that they're gonna actually comply with that if they just thought they had a week, for example, right? So as we continue on, some learning opportunities for enforcement services throughout the year, indigenous training, use force training, building trust in municipalities, workplace violence prevention, stuff like that. When we get into the different complaints that were received, three hundred and forty, we had a total of six hundred and twenty five complaints throughout the year, which is a two hundred and sixty percent increase from two thousand and twenty one from the information that we could locate. Through that, three hundred and forty seven or fifty seven percent of the complaints were received by phone. Of the six hundred and twenty five complaints, we investigated one thousand and forty eight different things. So for example, if someone calls that it's one complaint, but they have three properties that are unsightly, for example, that is three different investigations on one complaint. So it just kind of tries to capture, it is a little bit confusing, but it does try to capture the actual work that we are doing, the actual investigations we are doing there. Through that, we had five hundred and thirteen tickets and warnings issued by officers. Those are primarily through proactive traffic enforcement. There's a little bit on animal control, a little bit on unsightly properties, but the majority of that does come from tickets or proactive traffic such as stop signs, cell phones, stuff like that. Our busiest day of the week for calls coming in was or complaints coming in was on Tuesday. The busiest time of the day for when complaints would come in was between eleven AM and twelve PM. Busiest month of the year was September. Why those are, I have no idea. So we'll see how things kind of go as years years progress on whether that changes or if that's a good trend. That definitely gives us, I'll get into it a little bit more, but this kind of information does give us good insights on properly scheduling of staff and stuff like that. So we want to make sure we have staff in on Tuesdays. We want to make sure that we have staff in between eleven and twelve. We want to make sure maybe September is not a good month to do vacations kind of thing, right? So it does start giving us some analytics that we can properly start staffing the department and making some proper decisions on that. Previously, I mentioned the top three priorities through the Satisfaction Survey were traffic, community standards and so unsightly properties and animal related incidents. So I captured those as kind of the top three on this as well. So we had two hundred and ten investigations related relating to traffic complaints. We had two hundred and forty eight investigations relating to community standards, and we had four hundred and forty five investigations relating to animal control related items. So we get into some complaint types. So this is just broken down into the specific piece of legislation for the most part. So we have our provincial legislations listed on top. We then have our municipal bylaws listed kind of in the middle there. And then we have some kind of assists and some different categories down at the bottom. Again, through that, that equals up to one thousand and forty eight investigations throughout the year. So again, we're continuing some complaints by locations. When we do our files, we we've categorized the municipality into five different quadrants, if you want to call it that. We have northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest, and then the industrial area. So we use fiftieth avenue, fiftieth street as the main, main two areas to kind of split the community. And then we use the section for industrial roads, so thirty fourth avenue, I believe it is, so kind of equal to kind of warehouses area. And south below, we consider that industrial. So throughout the year, southeast was the busiest quadrant, if you want to call it that. However, when you look at southeast, there is more houses, more people in that area. So it is kind of expected there's going to be a little bit more. So if we kind of keep that in mind, it is pretty, pretty common throughout the each quadrant's minus industrial for where we are spending our time on complaints. When we get into method of complaints, we accept complaints by phone. We accept complaints by walking up at the counter to walking up to the officer by email or citywide. So fifty seven percent of the complaints came through phone. Fifteen percent came through online or email. So that's like citywide or sending an email. Fifteen percent were officer observed. So that's proactive files. Four percent were walk up to normally like the front counter at the town office here with a concern and nine percent were in person. Now, the one I really want to talk about is the nine percent in person. It's a low number, if you want to think about it. But in all actuality, it's not a low number. That nine percent is when a staff member such as myself, we're in the community, we're sitting on the side of the road, we're walking the trails and a public member of the public comes up to us with a concern. Now, especially in the last couple of years with the public's view on law enforcement, it's been a lot more negative in the last couple of years than than historically. People's view of law enforcement's not always positive. Lots of people are afraid or scared of law enforcement kind of thing. So to still have nine percent of people coming up to a staff member as as they're sitting there and expressing their concerns, I think that's a win. That's fifty three of our complaints were of people coming up to us. So that shows that they're they they're not scared of us. They're willing to come up and talk to us. So I think as as our staffing levels increase, if we get this grant where we're out on the trails more, we're on bikes more, I think that number's gonna increase and I think that's a good number that that we would increase. I'd love to see that number get up a lot more than nine percent. Sometimes it is hard, but although nine percent, it is a positive number in my view. Getting into complaints by day a week. So previously I mentioned Tuesday was the busiest day, followed by Wednesday with one less. So again, when when the complaints are coming in, Saturdays and Sundays are currently the slowest times that we're getting complaints. For the most part, we're not working many weekends right now. Again, once when staffing levels get back to where they should, hopefully that that fluctuates. But again, once people, once public starts seeing us working on the weekends, I foresee some of our numbers are gonna go up a little bit more on the weekends. But currently, it's that Tuesday, Wednesday are the primary times that we're getting complaints. And again, the primary time that complaints are coming in are between eleven and twelve PM, not really much, or yeah, eleven AM and twelve PM. Not really much kind of come that eight o'clock ish PM until about eight o'clock in the morning. There are a couple complaints that are coming in here and there. But again, when we're looking at scheduling and stuff like that, sure, let's have some evening coverage and stuff like that. But I don't think having some late nights, early mornings is is really what we need. We'll get some proactive work over that, but people aren't gonna call us at eleven o'clock at night with an unsightly property complaint. And we're not gonna go knocking on the door telling someone to cut their grass at eleven o'clock at night either, right? So definitely gives us some some analytics to again, continue with some decisions for the department. Getting into warnings and tickets, as previously mentioned, we had five hundred and nine throughout the year. Primarily, those are from moving violations such as speeding, distracted driving, stop signs, et cetera. But there are some regarding animals such as animal at large, unsightly properties, et cetera. So in twenty twenty two, the department issued two hundred and seventy seven warnings and two hundred and thirty two tickets. So roughly, that's about a forty five to fifty five percent split on tickets to warnings. So the department's not heavy handed when it comes to all we're doing is warnings. We're not heavy handed on all we're doing is tickets kind of thing, right? I think it's a good balance that we have, and I think it's important that we do have have a balance such as that. Of the two hundred and thirty two tickets that were issued, in twenty twenty two, we've had eight not guilty pleas being made. One has changed their pleaded guilty before trial. One was convicted in absence when they failed to attend. One was convicted on their charges after going to trial and five are awaiting trial. This isn't a full capture of what we could have. For example, if you're issuing a ticket in December, court date's not in December. It's not gonna be until February or March. So we could have a couple more trickling in the next little bit, but under five percent of people that are being charged are are currently disputing the charges. So again, I think that's positive in the sense on we're not not charging the innocent per se, if you want to want to say that, right? Where our charges are are solid that are going through. So yeah, we'll we'll see how that kind of plays out as as years go on. Complaints against peace officers and bylaw officers. So under the peace officers are regulated under the Peace Officer Act and its regulations and policy when it comes to complaints and then bylaw officers are regulated under the bylaws, bylaw enforcement officer bylaw, and then again, our internal policies and procedures. When I talk about the following complaints, it is when the officer is acting in the capacity of either the peace officer or in the capacity of a bylaw officer. So in twenty twenty two, both Megan and myself were both duly appointed as community peace officers and as bylaw enforcement officers. So when the complaints come in, it's are you acting in the capacity of a peace officer or are you acting in the capacity of a bylaw officer? And then the complaints are dealt with accordingly to that. So in twenty twenty two, we had one complaint from the public against a peace officer, which was unfounded. And in twenty twenty two, we had one employer initiated complaint against a bylaw officer, which was founded. So a look ahead into twenty twenty two, or sorry, twenty twenty three, there's gonna be an addition of another peace officer, the addition of another peace officer vehicle. We recently purchased a used twenty thirteen Dodge Charger. So we've got a little bit of things to change deckels and stuff like that on the side. So hopefully when the new officer starts, we have a vehicle and we're ready to go with it. We have the possibility of receiving the crime prevention grant and then starting with the initiatives identified through the grant. There's gonna be the renewal of the memorandum of understanding, the MOU with Drayton Valley and the RCMP pertaining to peace officers. That expires in about a month and a half ish. We're gonna work towards advocating for changes towards PTSD with community peace officers, which council is aware of. We're gonna be implementing new policies and procedures. We're gonna be creating a new multi-year traffic safety plan. We're gonna explore a regional MOU between the town and Drayton Valley for peace officer services. We're gonna see the install of CCTV cameras throughout the community. We're gonna explore any additional authorities for peace officers that may be a benefit to the community, and we're gonna be reviewing the Animal Control Bylaw. Throughout that, we're gonna be continuing to continuing to review the internal practices and procedures of the department to ensure that we're being as effective in our roles as possible and that we're being provided with effective oversight when doing so. Quick overview of budget twenty twenty two, we were allocated two hundred and seventy one thousand and twenty twenty three, we are allocated three hundred and seventy seven thousand for the enforcement services department. Contact information, this is more of a province thing, just who do they need contact? But again, for the public, they can contact enforcement services by phone, by email, by citywide or in person kind of thing. So and as always, the public and council, if you have Facebook as well, this is for you. You can follow us on our enforcement services Facebook page to see what what the department's up to and if there's anything going on. So I'd like to thank the hardworking team and as well the other departments and the organizations, nonprofits and stuff that we've worked with throughout the year. Without everyone's help, we wouldn't we wouldn't have been able to get where we were today. So thank you for all that. And I'd like to express our gratitude to the community for the community continued support, trust and encouragement as well for the department. So with that being said, I'd like, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Well, thank you for your very informative report. Questions from council? Council events?
No problem.
Yeah, just was curious. This was the first I heard about our electric bikes and patrolling the the trails. Curious to know what what was the deciding factor to 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 start patrolling the trails? Are we seeing some incidents there or is it something we we felt we needed to 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 throw some some time at?
Yeah, so that is one of the initiatives that was put forward in the grant. So if the grant is not successful, we'll have to reevaluate on whether or not we will be doing that or not. If the grant is successful, then we will have monies available to purchase the bikes and then continue on with doing some additional patrols and stuff like that. With the grant, again, we created it with the mindset of creating a safer community. And through that is getting out more visible in the areas where you're normally not gonna be. So your your trails, areas where it's hard to get by with vehicle and areas where might take a while to get get to on foot. So it's not a guaranteed, it's gonna depend on what happens with with this grant. And through the grant, part of it was for additional monies for additional patrols. So again, just just getting us more visible in the community in the areas that we're we're normally not in.
Yeah, and I guess it's a good opportunity to have those conversations that you're trying to initiate. It's a it's a pretty good, pretty good place to stop and chat with with people who are using the trails. Okay, thank you for that, Cody. Oh, here's my marks. Under a look back at twenty two, you said addition of primary highway enforcement. Can you expand on that a little bit and tell me what that's that involves? I didn't think we had much involvement in primary highways.
Yeah, so primary highways, because Drayton Valley is town, we don't have much, much of a primary highway. However, Highway twenty two or Cowboy Trail does run throughout the community. It's a little stretch road, but prior to having this authority, technically, we couldn't do any enforcement on the highway. However, once the authorities were granted by the province, then we do have a have the ability to conduct enforcement on Highway twenty two now. It is quite common for peace officer agencies to have have authority on primary highways. So this was just kind of, I'd suggest probably ninety five percent of peace officer agencies do have it. For whatever reason, Drayton Valley didn't have it. So it was just the addition of of getting that in there. When we do look at at collisions within the town of Drayton Valley, the serious injury and fatal collisions, the majority of them are along Highway twenty two. So that is an area where we should be focusing some time to do some some enforcement kind of thing is is where where the where the fatalities and serious injuries are occurring, right? If if you're concerned about monetary monies coming from that kind of thing, it does, the money do does come back to the town, the percentage of it anyways. So it's not like we're just dedicating our time to the province's road kind of thing and it, we don't see any benefit out of it, if you want to call it that. One, we do see the monetary gain, but more importantly, we do see. we don't see any benefit out of it, if you want to call it that. One, we do see the monetary gain, but more importantly, we do see the ability to hopefully reduce collisions, which is a big burden on society.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough. I I guess the only concern I have is that we're we're doubling up on that 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 coverage that the the R C and P is generally supplying on those on those highways.
That'd be questionable, but sure.
Okay, you you want to get into that? You don't think the R C and P are are covering the highways?
From the information that that I've seen so far, and from what I know with DEPO, it would be limited for the amount of time that the R C and P would be actually conducting enforcement in the town of Drayton Valley on Highway two specifically when it comes to traffic.
Okay, so how much of your time do you think will be spent patrolling or or en- enforcement on on the the chunk of highway going through town?
Yeah, it is very limited. Again, it's it's not like it's all of a sudden overnight, we're going to be doing a big drastic in increase. We've had these authorities on the highway since April-ish, give or take. So it's been eight, nine, ten months now where we have had authorities on the highway there. It's it's not, I'm going to spend my whole day out on the highway kind of thing, right? It's if you're driving to the C E T C, for example. Now you have options. Now you're going through town or you're going on the highway. If you see something in between kind of thing, you can deal with it. So again, it's it's not meant to replace any other agency that that currently has authority on the roadway. It's meant to supplement.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks for that. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Amanda?
Thank you. Yeah, excellent presentation, Cody, you know, informative and all that. So that's excellent. And also you've done, your department is doing a great job on lots of work there. I was just wondering, you mentioned about in traffic enforcement and the tickets that you're giving away and all that. Are you seeing any particular spot or spots that maybe we need to focus on more, maybe more signage? Maybe there's more activity there that has as a town we need to work on?
At this point, our records management system is still being a little bit more fine-tuned to be able to kind of pinpoint that stuff a little bit better. So my answer is going to be an anecdotal answer from what I can kind of, from what I know kind of thing. Couple, couple areas that that we often get a lot of concerns with is the parking lots and adjacent roads to the Omni Plex. I would suggest a good chunk of the tickets and warnings do come out of either the parking lot or nearby roadways. That would be kind of the the main area. And then again, currently the school zone on Fiftieth Avenue at D V Christian School. We do see often lots of people don't like slowing down in that area for some reason. So with that in mind, though, it's my understanding that school will be closed within the next year-ish kind of thing. So to do improvements in that area, I'm not not sure is really needed at this point. Definitely some areas for lots of fatal and and the serious injury collisions. Collision priority areas, if you want to call it that, would be Fiftieth Street and Highway twenty-two up by Boston Pizza. And then Fiftieth Avenue, and I believe it's Fifty-Fourth Street, the intersection by the Royal Suites. There's a number of collisions that are at that that location as well. So and then kind of just within the hundred meters ish vicinity, northeast, southwest of Fiftieth Avenue and Fiftieth Street is kind of another hotspot for for collisions in general. So those are kind of three hotspot areas, if you want to call it that, that if we are doing traffic enforcement, if we are trying to impact and reduce the number of collisions, those would kind of be areas to focus on.
Okay, so are you working with Public Works and giving you input just to see if we need more signage there or what what else can we do to?
Yeah, so like I mentioned there, throughout the year, we've worked with over transportation as well as with Public Works for the various roadways to improve signage, recommend changes, stuff like that. So there's definitely a lot of ways to go throughout the whole community when it comes to signage kind of thing, but we are taking steps to work with our our other departments to kind of get those signs changed and get improvements and stuff like that. In addition, being part of the Community Safety Committee, there are discussions that kind of happen through in that committee as well as it pertains to kind of traffic and stuff like that. Ultimately, changes to roadways and stuff like that, though, would would fall under the purview of council and or Public Works.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Ricky?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ballas. Cody, I have a couple of questions. I'll I'll start with right now, our staffing. Are we at one?
Oh, that is correct.
And we will be at one until maybe spring?
At this point, we are actively recruiting for the additional community officer position. So it depends on kind of how much longer that's going to take for that position to be filled, depending on where they're coming from, if there's going to be delays on moving and stuff like that. And then the other the other officer is currently off on a leave. I'm not sure when when that is going to be, hopefully returning sooner rather than later, but.
Okay. So when I look through the report, we are short really in 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 many ways, so we're not able to get we're not able to be proactive in our in our work. And I'm thinking of sidewalks because I walk every day and I was thinking at some point in time, I might see some yellow tickets saying, you got to clean up your sidewalks. It's just hard to get to that.
Yeah. With being a one one person kind of dealing with approximately seven thousand population when it comes to the the bylaws and a lot of the provincial stuff. At this point, there's very limited when it comes to proactive enforcement that is done. Primarily, it is reactive based only. And with that, when when it does come to sidewalks, we we have dealt with, I have dealt with some sidewalk complaints that have come in kind of thing. But again, it's it's complaint driven, it's not proactive. I don't have the time in the day. I'd love to. Hopefully, once we're back fully staffed, that that is going to be the plan, is that we are a lot more proactive. And then again, the public knows we're out dealing with it, so then they're just going to deal with it without our involvement, right? So that's ideal. Again, hopefully April-ish, we've got two more staff members, but unknown.
And I think the sense that we we enacted new bylaws and given you the tools, I would say it's just the manpower that really is 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 holding us back at this time. So if I was talking to citizens, I might suggest that once we have the manpower, you may have to pick up your game a little bit.
Yeah, definitely. For example, the Community Standards Bylaw, that definitely helped us with dealing with a lot of properties. Throughout the summer months, we did have our our two officers in at the time, which definitely we were able to do a big impact with both complaints for unsightly properties. As well, we were proactive on dealing with a number of unsightly properties as well, right? So I think we had some good strides when it came to the unsightly properties this summertime, but unfortunately, with staffing levels that kind of decreased shortly thereafter and then change of season. It has been, has reduced the the proactive abilities that that our department can do right now. So it is very call it poor customer service, if you want to call it that, that that we are giving the the public right now from enforcement services because we can't give the full attention and detail to every investigation because there is so many that's that's coming up right now, right? So I'm doing my best, trying trying to stay stay afloat with everyone and the 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 public that I have been talking to, I express this to them, so that they're they're aware, and they seem to be understanding that might be a little bit delayed, that I'm not going to be there tomorrow about the sidewalk. It might be two days. They seem to be understanding of that, which is good so far. So hopefully, that stays for another month or two that we need it, but I I'm hoping that throughout, again, once once the addition of this other officer comes in and the other officer returns, that we're in a good shape, that we can do a lot more proactive stuff and hopefully, the community starts looking better in other areas that it's lacking currently.
Tobacco and vaping reduction. It was, it's an act. And I was curious about the act. It is the the sense is is that we want to not control perhaps, but to lessen vaping and tobacco use. And I think in another act, they talk about alcohol use. And so is that really the intention under those acts is to reduce?
So, yeah, the Tobacco Smoke, Smoke Tobacco Smoking and Vaping Reduction Act. The, it's it is a large act. It covers various things such as the needs to commercial when they're selling tobacco and the signs that they need to have, that they can't display tobacco, they can't sell to minors from the aspect of a consumer kind of thing. It controls weathering, whether youth can purchase it or not, possess it, different stuff like that. So it is quite, it is a broad piece of legislation. It also talks about like smoking in taxis, smoking in workplaces, different stuff like that. So it does encompass variety of things pertaining to smoking, smoking, but it does. I I would suggest that's the intent behind the legislation is not necessarily to reduce people smoking, but to limit where they can and can't smoke.
Yeah, I thought that was the case. I was just interested in the in the fact that it talked about reduction and it's it's lettered as that in the act. You've been getting, I think, a few complaints on cannabis odors in the community. Are we are we, we're at reactive at this point? Do we have a plan?
Yeah, so that currently falls with planning and development. I don't know, I I believe Jerick is kind of taking lead on that. I don't know if we want to get into that now or kind of just kind of high level, that is being currently dealt with through planning and development.
I think, Jerick, we can do that under your report. When when it comes forward, we all ask the same question. Well, department report. Yeah, I'll just ask that question. So know that it's coming. Eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars for cameras. Specific places in within the community. Who has access to the camera? Is that the R C and P or just remind me of where we're at on that?
So that was approved in the two thousand twenty-three budget. We're currently working on kind of getting some pricing figuring out exactly which cameras, which servers, stuff like that we're going to be going with. In addition to that, there is going to be a policy that's going to need to come in front of council to make a final decision on. That policy will regulate who's who has access, how how where the public can get the video, et cetera. One thing, though, is the cameras are going to belong to the town of Drayton Valley, so the R C and P aren't going to have viewing capability per se. They would be able to access video if they do need it for an investigation, though.
Yeah, you would let them access, but it's really ours and and we we have full access to that.
That's correct. They would have to access the video through like a Freedom of Information request kind of thing. And then it would have to be evaluated on whether or not that that video would be be released to them. Alternatively, they could always seek a warrant kind of thing, but if they can fill out a piece of paper and we can do a FOI request, it's going to be a lot easier and simpler than than getting a warrant for that kind of thing. So but it is the proper channels still need to be followed through that, so.
According to the Freedom of Information. Okay, Cody, thanks very much. Appreciate your report. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just a question, Cody. When I look at the complaints and I see over fifty percent are animal control or or community standards bylaw. So those obviously take up a lot of your time. Is there a different solution? To reduce the number of complaints? We ban animals? That's not a suggestion, by the way.
Thanks, thanks for clarifying that one. As I mentioned, we will be reviewing the Animal Control Bylaw in two thousand twenty-three. So we do have some challenges currently with with some of the wording in the Animal Control Bylaw. So hopefully, when that comes forward, we can get some kind of improvements. That might help with with reducing some some of the complaints. Again, and kind of going with the unsightly's, I think, once we we started it this summer, and I think as time goes on and the community starts to understand that that the town is serious about you got to clean up your properties kind of thing. I think we're going to get a lot more voluntary compliance on people will just take care of it on their own. Even even this this previous summer, we've had a number of vacant properties that the owners live in other provinces, towns, whatever, and they just didn't maintain it. And they haven't maintained it because they weren't required, no one forced them to do it in the past, right? Once, once we became involved this year, we we kind of talked about what the process is, how they're responsible for cutting it, stuff like that. And we already seen in two thousand twenty-two how we talked to them early on in the season. Once we gave them our first order that you need to do it, they started proactively taking care of it throughout the year. So I think once the community starts to see that they actually have to take care of X, Y, and Z. For the most part, they're going to. So that's going to, I think, remove some of our our files. And then kind of just going back to that social media piece and that advertising and stuff like that. If if people know that they have to whatever the law is, there's a better chance they're going to comply with it without our involvement. So good example of of that is snow removal. When when Public Works was going to go and do a bunch of cleaning up the roads kind of thing. My understanding is historically, there hasn't been much ticketing for vehicles not moving for snow removal in the past. There might have been a little bit of towing kind of thing, but it's been very limited. The first sweep, we went out there, I think I ended up issuing twenty-five tickets, if I recall correctly, for vehicles that didn't move for snow removal. All of a sudden, I start hearing from other 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 people in the community on, you guys are ticketing for that? Why, why, why? Right? And now all of a sudden, it starts that awareness piece, right? So now, next time the signs go out, it's not, well, they're just going to go around. It's I better move, otherwise I got to pay for it, right? So I I think, again, there's, from my understanding and and what I've kind of been able to determine so far is there's been a lack of enforcement in the past. And the community knows that. So I think they've got pretty relaxed and following some of the rules and stuff like that. So as time goes on and they they start understanding that the community is actually going to be enforcing the bylaws and the provincial statutes and stuff like that, I think that is going to reduce some of it.
In regards to the Animal Control Bylaw, in order to make people more responsible, do, does the town need to look at strengthening strengthening their bylaw with consequence?
I think so. And I think that's part of when we we bring forward the Animal Control Bylaw, there's going to be I would suggest there's going to be proposal for increase in fine amounts. But not only is it, let's put a higher fine amount. That falls back on enforcement services to, let's actually do some enforcement, right? So again, I think historically, there's been a lot of well, you're, this is the third time your cat's been at large. Here's another warning, right? To me, that's unacceptable. It's costing a lot of money. It's taken a lot of time to deal with this. So we need to start pulling up our socks on the enforcement side. And no, that's not your third warning this year. You're getting a ticket. Right? And now, once that monetary penalty starts coming in, maybe I'm going to take care of my cat, right? Not guaranteed, possibility.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Cody, for your report. It was an excellent report, very informative. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thanks so much.
In regards to the report, does somebody from council want to make a motion to accept the enforcement services annual report as twenty-two as information? Councilor Sheriff? On favor? All right, quarter after ten, our mayor is back. I'm out of here. We'll take a ten-minute, fifteen-minute adjournment and reconvene in fifteen minutes.
Good morning, everybody. We will reconvene the meeting at ten twenty-seven A M. And we'll jump back into our decision items. Nine point two discretionary use request. Drive-through for a proposed establishment, eating and drinking at twenty fifty-fiftieth Street, Lot Twelve, Block Three, Plan One Four Two Zero One Four Seven for development permit, D V twenty-three dash zero zero five. Good morning, Mr. Connors.
Good morning, your worship and fellow council members. So administration received a request for a drive-through combined with a new establishment, eating and drinking, to be built at twenty fifty-fiftieth Street. The lot is Zoned C Gen or Commercial General District, where the eating establishment is permitted, but where the eating establishment is permitted, but the drive-through is discretionary use to be heard by council acting as the MPC. The site currently appears and operates as a convenience store and gas bar. It is situated along a service road off of fiftieth street, just north of highway twenty-two in the biomile business park area of town. The site is flanked by sparse commercial development to the north, a truck fuel and parking areas to the west and south. The new proposed development is planned to utilize an undeveloped portion of the site immediately north and adjacent to the existing convenience store. The application seeks to build a new building containing a restaurant to end the drive-through. Administration's review of the application is that both the drive-through and restaurant proposed either meet or are conditioned to meet the requirements for both uses in the land use bylaw. Administration circulated the application to multiple internal groups and agencies, and what the comments received back are adding the following conditions to the development permit. A removal or relocation of the existing propane tank on site will be required to accommodate the proposal, and all necessary permits and procedures for that alteration will be required to be obtained. A relocation of the fire hydrant on site will also be required. The applicant has already chosen a new area suitable to fire services and utilities, and it is reflected in the provided site plan, but they will still need to confirm and obtain sign-off for more specific elements like the hydrant orientation prior to installation. The application greatly exceeds minimum parking requirements. However, some of the desired stalls are located such as to potentially overlap with access to the underground storage tank for the gas station. The permit is conditioned such that fuel delivery is to be arranged to avoid main dining hours for the restaurant in order to avoid conflicts between patrons and fuel deliveries. Engineering will also require a final plan of utility connections provided and signed off before construction begins. And a garbage receptacle will need to be placed along the drive-through and accessible by drivers per land use bylaw section four point five requirements. The area is sparsely developed commercial and requires a lengthy trip leaving fiftieth street and traveling along a service road to reach the planned drive-through, as well as multiple avenues for approach mitigating backlog in any particular direction. In accordance with four point five F of land use bylaw, a traffic impact assessment was viewed as not necessary component for this application. Both the MDP and the biomile area structure plan identify this location as a planned area for commercial development, but do not get into the specifics regarding the type of commercial development to take place. Administration views the proposal as inadherence to both the MDP and the area structure plan. Administration's recommendation is that council approve development permit DV twenty-three dash zero zero five with conditions as presented. The proposed uses as conditioned to meet the requirements of the land use bylaw and the discretionary use drive-through is not viewed as improper or unacceptable for the location. We welcome any questions or comments you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Counselor Evans?
Just the, the storage tank is, is, is what I'm asking about. Fuel deliveries to the site may be arranged such that they avoid overlap with primary dine-in hours for the restaurant in order to minimize conflict. Do, do they have the ability to, to request a specific time for those deliveries? And is there enough room for a large truck to, to get in there? I, I was looking for exactly where they were, they were going to have to go in that parking area. It, it looks to me like a big truck pulling in there would block not only the parking, but the drive-through, et cetera. But I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. Like I say, I couldn't see exactly where it was or how they'd kind of situate in there.
Thank you for the question. So with the properties being under the same property owner, there is ability for there to be the stipulations on there that these be arranged in order to not conflict with one another. If it was two separate owners and it was subdivided, there would be larger issues in conditioning permits for one property that had relevance to a different one, but because they are bundled together, there is the ability to do that. This is not the first time that administration has proposed items like this. There have been incidents where some locations were closer to school delivery areas. So it was suggested that these be conditioned such that deliveries happen outside of school drop-off and pickup times in order to avoid sort of heavy backlog and conflicts in that time as well. So that is something that can be conditioned on the, the permit itself to be added there. And then regarding where the tanker goes, currently they do situate themselves in between the island and the fuel tank, sort of in the very top right corner or northeast corner there. So they would be currently situated on top of where all of those stalls are placed on the blueprint there. Those stalls are in excess of the minimum parking requirements. So if need be, they can be removed if it does become an issue and they'd still meet the land use bylaw requirements for stalls on site. They only need eighteen. And they are proposing twenty-seven, so they would still meet it at that instance. Very likely, you would have the truck instead of right on where the stalls are, they would be pulling in on the opposite side, which could create some tightening issues there regarding trying to exit back out to the north of the drive-through, but there should still be access to exit out of the east side of the lot for vehicles.
So it's up in the right-hand corner there, right by those parking spots wedged up into that.
Yeah, that dotted cylinder area is the underground tank and the circles are the, the access points for it.
I guess in the end, if we approve it, it'll be the business themselves that will, will be kind of dealing with that, not I don't think we'll be getting any calls on it. So, thank you.
Any other questions for administration? Counselor McGee?
It was, it was a good question, but if you, if you look on page fifty-nine, specifically there, the, the top piece, there's a little bit of a white area that, that's just above those. And that's where I typically see the, the tanker sitting and it seems to me that you're right, they, it's a similar, an owner of the same business, so they'll have to take the heat for blocking whatever street they have. And I'll make a motion if everybody's ready.
I think Counselor Kamana has a question.
Thank you. I guess just a clarification. So the existing convenience store, is this going to be attached to that? Or is it going to be a separate on the, on the map? And also about the hours that we just discussed, it's up to the business to figure it out or if there's any, I guess, anything that town need to do if they're not following that hours.
Thank you for the question. So in regards to the first part on the attached to the building, no, it's going to be separated out with the drive-through passing in between them and a little bit of a sidewalk area on the side of the building as well. So it will be a standalone structure separate from the existing convenience store, but they will be relatively close to one another on site. And then for the second question regarding the hours in particular there, specifically, we would be putting a bit of deference to the property owner to sort out what would make sense for them in terms of their main dine-in hours. We wouldn't sort of stipulate to say you must close at a certain point in, of time and day. And we would have a mechanism as it is on the development permit, if this is an issue and it's not being followed through, to get it addressed at a later point because it is on the development permit as a condition.
Thank you, Jerry.
And I'm just, Counselor Clark is still online. Nathan, you'll let me know if his hand is up or if there's a question as well? Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. If there's no other questions, Counselor McGee, would you like to make a motion?
Good, Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that council approve development permit DV twenty-three dash zero zero five with the recommended conditions as presented, and that's attachment zero eight, the draft development permit.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? None? All in favor? That is carried. Moving on to nine point three. Thank you very much, Jerick. The appointment of the deputy mayor, Mr. Osmond.
Thank you very much. So we have an item here today. We have a, it's an eight-month schedule that we establish at the beginning of the term of council to rotate through the councilors so that each councillor gets an opportunity to fill the position of deputy mayor. So with the beginning of March this year, the schedule we have established has councillor Amila Gamana beginning his term as deputy mayor, and so we just need a motion from council to make that appointment.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Ballas, did you have a question?
I object.
No. I'd like to make a motion.
You, you just, you're doing such a fantastic job, you're not willing to give it up? You're, you're going to hold on?
I move that council approve the appointment of councillor Amila Gamana as the deputy mayor for the period March one, twenty twenty-three to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Just want to say that thank you very much for your reign as deputy mayor and for chairing fantastic job. And you're, you're still part of council. You're not going anywhere, but I appreciate all the extra help and support that you've given along the way. And I welcome Amila on to as deputy mayor and look forward to working closely with you over the next few months as well. There's no other comment, question, or debate, then I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Okay, we will move along to nine point four. New Pool, Omniplex Complex Traffic Control Signage Plan. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Let me bring up those. All right, so with the opening up of Ricochet Center, New Pool, there is a need to reestablish the traffic control signage in that area for the safety of the public. So what is happening, this is the current situation. From the north, this is West Valley Road. This is Ricochet Center, New Pool. So people are driving, when they are coming from West Valley Road, they are driving through and through this parking lot and then go into forty-five Ave. So right now, and then within the parking lot, when they are, because there is no hindrance and there are no traffic, you know, bumps, they are driving, when they are coming from forty-five Ave, they are driving within the parking lot and, and they, they speed and go and approach this road. There's a yield sign here. There's a yield sign here. From the Ricochet Center, some people, there's the overflow parking here. Some people walk across this road. And so this has become a really traffic safety situation here. So what we are proposing here is, go to the next slide, please. Go down, next page. So what we are proposing here is a four-way stop here. And from forty-five avenue, this perimeter road will become a main road. So there is, we will remove the yield sign here, we will put a stop sign here. And we will put four-way stops here. We will have no thorough road here sign on both ends. And there will be a zebra crossing here, zebra crossing over there. Yield sign stays here. And we will put some jersey barriers so that people coming from this side, they don't go into the parking lot straight away. So we have to streamline some things here. And that's pretty much it. And if council has any questions, they can ask. Otherwise, we are asking that council approve this traffic safety plan and then we'll go back and do some pricing for the jersey barriers and we will implement it.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Counselor Ballas?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just have some concern about the four-way stop because I think if you're having a major event there, you're going to have a congestion of traffic and you're not going to have no flow. So I would, I know you need stop signs, but I, I think you've got to have a major flow out of there and maybe just two stop signs and have that flow coming out of the parking lot and going through.
So I think that there is already two stop signs there, like there is.
Yeah, there are. So I, I have a dissent view, I'm sorry.
Bill, are you done with your questions? Your comment? Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Kamana?
I'm going to make a comment, but it's the other way around. Sorry. So my, my experience with going to the aquatic facility, and aquatic facility is used very much, the traffic flow is from aquatic facility to be, to out. Yes, when there's event at the Omniplex, there will be a traffic flow that way. But when, most of the time it's the other way around. So we need to balance the two because right now the stop signs on the, right there, the aquatic facility side. Here, and then maybe here, when they are turning left. What, what I've observed is that there's traffic coming in and stopping, there's no traffic going that way most of the time during the day. So how do we balance that? I don't know. The other option is a very expensive one to make a roundabout here.
Yeah. Yeah, we might have to maybe even get a price on that. Just, I know that even with the school, it gets, you know, a little bit crazy come after school when there's something happening at the Omniplex and the pool. And then you'd be closing to the south there in front of the, the fitness center, you'd be closing that all off, like down? The yellow barriers are all down right there? So you'd be closing all that off?
So what, yeah, so forty-five avenue, they are coming here, they will go straight.
They would go straight.
And then when they are coming from this side, there will be a stop sign. So right now they have a yield sign, but it doesn't make sense. So this will become a thorough road, thorough fair.
And then, so then once you, if you were to come up that and then you were to come to, yeah, right there, and then you were gonna, then there's a through road right there? How are you going to stop people from going through into the parking lot then? Because that's, I'm just thinking if you're going to drop kids off for school, you're going to be coming in through the south, going up, and there'd be a four-way stop, and then you'd probably come straight down south again. You wouldn't go, continue to go all the way to the west. So you're still going to have that, people kind of going everywhere within the parking lot still.
So, okay, people who are coming from this side, they will, they will stop here to turn left or go straight this way or this way. So four-way stop, that's why we are proposing four-way stop here. Right now, this parking lot, we have to make sure that people are not doing stunts here. The signage should be proper and then there will be enforcement part, but I, I really didn't get the.
Well, I'm just thinking of the congestion you're going to have at that four-way stop, stop. If that's the only in and out, when, you know, when you've got the swimming pool, when you've got something going on at the Omniplex, when you have school buses coming, you know, taking kids, I know just right now when you exit and you come there that, you know, the bus is lined up and I can't imagine, I think you'll just have a bottleneck if you're having a stop. It, it's, I don't think it's going to solve. I think it's just going to make it worse, in my opinion. I don't know, right? Because you're closing in, you're closing a entry into it. You've got to have, yeah, that flow. So I don't know, like, what the proposal, what would be the cost on the proposal of this versus, you know, roundabout? Right? To have that continual flow or something? I'm not sure.
You can go back and look into that.
Anybody has any other questions? Counselor McGee?
All right, so we are all traffic enforcement officers here. So we're trying to make that decision based on, gee, I got blocked one time and I didn't really like it. I, it seems like an unusual, I know we have to make that decision, but it should be well thought out by, by people that look at that kind of, and I, I don't want to do a study on it. I just think the, you know, we're, we're going to have a, you know, question, opposed and, and non-opposed. And it doesn't feel real comfortable for me to, to get into that discussion because I'm not a traffic enforcement officer.
Thank you for the comment. Counselor Evans, another one of our traffic control slash counselors.
So I guess in, in the end, we want to keep the flow rolling down the outside of that
That's right.
parking lot and then bleed the traffic off into either the, the Ricochet Center or the school. Would it be possible, I wish I had your pointer there. When we're running down. Which one am I pushing here? Which one am I pushing here?
Okay.
There you go.
Got it. Would it be possible to bring this piece of road more in line with that and then have a intersection coming off of there that would bleed the traffic off either way? So say this was a straight-through road, you cut off that corner a little bit here to line them up a little better, and then you move that, expand that intersection over into that, but this is a straight-through, you have one-stop sign going there, and then you feed the parking lot over here somewhere. That might get a little, might get a little busy. I'm just trying to, if we can, keep this, keep this a direct connection instead of getting it into the, into this intersection and then trying to get people over this way. Because without barricades all the way up here, I think they're just gonna kind of go down there and then do what we don't want them to do. But if we really want that to be a main, actual road, maybe we should connect it together.
We can certainly look into that, that will be expensive to build that little piece of road.
Well, it's not that much of a, it's not that much of a piece right there, right?
Yeah.
That's all we're talking about. And then maybe have an exit, you know, you take advantage of this piece in here, that you can just bleed the traffic right off over into this section before it even gets to what could be a stop sign here. Does that make sense? You know what I'm...
Yeah, no, it can be a straight merge, go there, straight and merge it on that road.
Mr. Osmond, did you have a response for Rick?
Well, what I was going to suggest was, we had originally put this together because of the change in the traffic flows, we wanted to see what we could do to address, and we kept the scope pretty narrow. Because I think, you know, our main goal is to prevent vehicles from coming in either on the north or south entrance to the parking lot at speed into the parking lot, because there's a significant travel speed difference between those two areas. And if you don't have a brake for those vehicles to adjust their speed, you're gonna get a number of vehicles coming into the parking lot at speed or flowing out through those intersections at speed. So we certainly can, there's a number of other options, and I think, you know, talking about the realigning the road or a traffic circle or something like that would all certainly, I think, address the traffic flow better. But we had simply looked at something smaller in scope, but we can go back and have a look at what those would mean for us to do that, because I think the main goal is to make sure that we have people slowing down before entering the parking lot and clearing those intersections safely.
There is speed bumps to the, on the one road all the way up, the south coming in. Counsel McGee?
You know, I was thinking about the typical mall that you can get into, not so much here, but let's say West Ed or any of those malls, that they control all of these through barricades, curb and gutter. So in fact, it's just a wide-open parking lot, you can shoot right, you can shoot left, and maybe that's all it's gonna take, is just to barricade it. Curb and gutter, if that's less expensive than the big barriers. And then just say, you know, only one way out, and it happens all the time, I'm in Everton, I only get one way out, and I think, Jesus, one way out, who does that? That's my comment.
And that's why you're here making the decision today. Counsel Ballas?
You already covered basically what I was gonna suggest was speed bumps, but I would just leave a comment from perhaps our fire chief if, what they may have as suggestions or does it make any difference for emergency vehicles?
We haven't consulted them, but we can go back.
He's right behind you.
Hello? Okay, so we haven't consulted our emergency folks, but we can certainly go back and have another look and come back. Right now, it came from, you know, from, I think, from members of the council or from That there is, there is an issue, there is a traffic issue and there is a safety issue. And we wanted to get it done before the proper opening of the pool and, but it looks like it'll take some time now.
Counsel Kamana?
Okay, just a comment, when you look at, I guess, like Rick mentioned, you know, you're looking at the future, bigger picture, the other observation that I saw yesterday and the family day was that both the parking lots were full and there was no place to park. So future-proofing, we maybe needed to look at another parking lot in the future. When we look at the traffic flow, maybe we need to put that into the big picture as well, just a comment.
So I know that you came to us with a report, and I don't think you're leaving with any, any clearer of a picture of what that looks like, unfortunately. I know that the recommendation is that council accept New Pool Omniplex Complex Traffic Control Signage Plan for the implementation. There's been a lot of ideas and I guess this will work, this won't work, going around the table, so maybe as Rob suggested, if you can build a little bit different of a package or a plan and then bring it back, then maybe have a little bit more discussion when you know what those numbers are and what it's gonna cost to implicate some of those. Counsel Ballas, did you have another comment?
I was just gonna make a motion that we accept this report for information.
Yeah, is that fine? We accept it. Rick, did you have another question?
No.
No, okay. Your mic was on, that's why I just thought maybe.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, go ahead, Counsel Ballas. You're making a motion to accept it, okay? Any comment, question or debate on the motion? You're going out with a bang today, hey? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried.
Thank you.
You are so welcome. Okay, moving along to nine point five, Drayton Valley and District Historical Society gazebo requests. Mr. Osmond?
Thank you very much. So the Drayton Valley and District Historical Society has approached the town with a proposal to build a community gazebo. Through some discussions after the last time they were in and spoke to council, the society has raised a significant portion of project cost so far to date, and they're now in the process of applying for a grant to finish their fundraising. In order to proceed with that grant application, they had a number of questions for council, and so I just brought them forward for council's consideration. So their questions are upon completion of the project, will the town take on the ongoing care and maintenance of the gazebo? And so we do have a number of gazebo-type infrastructure in the community that we manage through our parks department, and so that's certainly something that could be contemplated. Will the town to have, agree to have the gazebo sited in the DeBee Lands and be considered part of the feature park proposal recently reviewed by council? And so that was at the last meeting, we provided a preliminary, high-level look of what a feature park could look like in that area, and so the group is asking whether we would consider citing the gazebo in that plan. And then finally, they are requesting a letter of support for the grant application itself. If council could provide some direction, I'd be happy to pass on the direction and decisions to the historical society so they can proceed with their grant chasing.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Counsel Ballas, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I'm just curious, is why they want to change the location? Because originally, it was meant to be down on the museum property, and that's where I thought it would be more practical versus putting it somewhere else.
I can respond to that. So I had a meeting with Charlie Minor. When we had met with the historical museum, we had met, I think with everybody from the society, and we had discussed the location of the gazebo being down there. We talked about things like vandalism, the homeless, things like that. There was talks of putting in a little fire pit in that, and we said how, you know, it could get burnt down. So Counsel McGee had suggested, what about DeBee Lands? You know, there was a concept plan coming forward for something to be developed there. So they took that back to the board and they talked about where in the community would be a good location, and they actually liked the location of the DeBee Lands. They wanted to know that, what would kind of be the long-term planning for this area, and they felt that moving it closer to the heart of the community, it would get more use. With being out there, it might not get the use that it was, and it might get vandalized. So the board decided that the DeBee Lands was a great location for it, they'd love to see it there, they think it would be a great place for the seniors to go and, you know, just have a little place to sit and things like that. I had shared with Charlie also that we had a concept plan that was coming, or that came to council, and there's been discussions with a company in town as well about developing that area in the, in the future. So they liked that, and then one of the questions were, who is going to look after the gazebo for, you know, just kind of keeping an eye on it, for garbage and just upkeep, things like that? So that was one of the questions, as well as they're applying for a grant for the rest of the funds, they've already raised thirty-one thousand dollars for the gazebo, they're going to be approaching the Rotary Club, Drayton Valley Tourism and Hospitality, Drayton Valley Community Learning for additional funding, Brazo County to raise the funds, because I think it was hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? Is that correct for the entire project? And so they still have some funds to raise, so they were wanting to apply for a grant, which they feel confident in, and they were looking for a letter of support to go along with that as well. Go ahead, Counsel Ballas.
It was under my impression that the idea of having the gazebo was to enhance the visibility of the museum. I do not see how that location is going to enhance any visibility of the museum or be of benefit to them personally, but that's my opinion.
Thank you for that. Counsel Kamana?
No, thank you. No, again, my opinion, I agree with Bill's opinion. So my concern is that, DeBee Land, we haven't had a conversation in council about what we are doing with that, where we are going with the lands. It's a prime location in our community, and I think we need to have a more robust discussion on what's our vision for that land and the other lands. And I think we were going to do that at some point about a year ago, where we had the land, list of lands that the town owned, and we were going to go one by one and figure out what are the uses or future uses that we are gonna do. We never had that discussion yet, so I'm assuming that we are gonna have that discussion at some point, and rather than going on one-offs, we need to be more, I guess, future and vision-focused. So that's my concern. This is a great project, and I agree with Bill, that if it is near the museum, that gives more exposure to the museum as well as brings more people to that area. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counsel McGee?
Well, interestingly enough, I'll disagree with both Bill and Amila. I think that the location that they, that they put forward when I first had a conversation with Mr. Minor was so far out of the way that you wouldn't even get the use out of it, and the only issue that might arise is perhaps people that might need his place to stay overnight and those types of things. Bringing it back up to the center of the community, under the guise of the Historical Society, through donations, and Counsel Kamana is right, that we have not had a robust discussion about what to do with that land. We're going to have a robust discussion about, and we also know that Counsel, that Mr. Minor started this project a year and a half ago and has advanced it to thirty thousand dollars, so let's just get ahead of that and say it's a year and a half down the road, we've got a concept plan, it looks good, gazebo goes here, and quite frankly, we can make that decision in a year and a half. And I suspect we will make the decision to put it on the DeBee Lands. So that's my comments on it. I think it's, we've got concepts, they're down the road, and when you talk about one-offs, everything that we do is one-offs, we were just dealing off in one-offs at the parking lot. I'm thinking that's how we react to things, and that's how the business of politics sometimes works. So I'm of the view that we go ahead and we say to them, we'd be interested in having further discussions of putting the gazebo on the DeBee Lands, and that we, we support the, and would write a letter of support for a gazebo, and go forward. Anyway, that's my view.
Thank you very much for that. Any other comments? I'll just add that I know that there were some questions here, and there's various inputs of where the location of that, you know, potential gazebo should be. I know that some of these can be worked out as the project starts and things like that, but I think the urgency maybe would just be for the letter of support for the grant application, that way if we give the letter of support for the gazebo, they can get it out there, and then it also helps to strengthen when they're presenting to the Rotary and Community Foundation and things like that. So I know that we do have to have further discussion on all of our lands, including the DeBee Lands, so that's something that's gonna have to go on a future agenda to look at. We've had a concept plan come forward, and we've had other discussions, so I think we need to kind of decide on what the next step is there, but today, I think maybe if we can even just, as part of this request, is just look for a letter of support, and the others, I think, will come in the next few months. Counsel Evans?
So the issue seems to be the location, but I'm okay with, with kind of moving forward, not knowing the exact location. I mean, there's nothing, there's no map or anything, it's just on the DeBee Lands somewhere. But I think we gotta support these folks, they put in the work. They're willing to raise the money and the town gets a nice piece of infrastructure that they're just required to maintain. Yeah, I think the right thing to do would be to, to accept it and support them, in my opinion.
Would you like to make a motion? Sure.
I am going to, to include everything, though.
Okay, well, you make whatever motion you'd like to make.
Okay, and then we'll see how it goes.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna go with the recommendation there that council support the Drayton Valley and District Historical Society gazebo project by providing a letter in support to the grant application, approve the sighting of the gazebo on DeBee Lands as part of the feature park concept plan, and agree to assume care and maintenance of the gazebo following the completion of the construction.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question or debate on the motion? Counsel Kamana?
Thank you. If you, if I may, Counsel Evans, I would like to make a friendly amendment to your motion, leave the location out and the rest. Well, leave the location open, so, you know, in future, we can have those robust discussions and, you know, hopefully not one-offs and have a vision going forward on what we're gonna do these, on these lands, especially, I feel that, like I said, DeBee Land is a very prime location for our community.
So I need to accept or not accept the friendly?
Yeah, so we'd vote on your motion or you'd accept the friendly amendment?
You know, in my mind, it's, it's open enough that it just identifies the DeBee Lands, not where exactly on those DeBee Lands that we, that we locate it. I don't know. Okay, I'll accept your, your friendly amendment if that'll get the support of you two grumps over there. Alrighty. I understand what you're saying, and it makes logical sense.
Okay, so there was a friendly amendment made by Counsel Kamana to remove the, the site of the gazebo to be the DeBee Lands. Did you get that? Free, perfect, okay. Any comment, question or debate on the amended, friendly amended motion? I'll just make the comment that I think the DeBee Lands is a perfect place for the gazebo. I think that it's a wonderful place for the park, and I'd love to see that... I think that it's a wonderful place for the park and I'd love to see that, um, the middle of the town be expanded. I know that we've had some, uh, work being done there to clear the, the brush and it looks absolutely fabulous. I think, you know, having the seniors there and to have access to better trails and walkability and to have a park there and all that, I think it would just be absolutely amazing. I know that we've been talking with some companies in the community as well that like to put into some funds and, and reclaimate that area as well. So, um, I'm looking forward to having a discussion of what the future of the DeBee lands looks like. And, um, hopefully we'll see, um, that site grow. But there is a motion on the table and I will ask, uh, all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Um, I think we have one more. Nine point six, picnic table locations. Mr. Malik?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, this RFT is about the locations of picnic tables. As part of the town beautification project, a budget of twenty thousand was allocated in twenty twenty-three budget for about ten picnic tables, uh, to be installed at various locations in the town. Uh, administration has selected a design of picnic table that fits into the budget. Um, and, um, we have attached the picture of the table and also we have proposed the locations. And, uh, in, with this RFT, we are asking council to approve the locations so that we can go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any comments or, sorry, any questions for administration?
So, um, can we go one by one on slide, please?
Okay, you're just going to show us?
Okay, so this is the design we have chosen. Um, this will go into ten locations. Sikura Park. We have shown the location over there.
Yeah.
And then we have the Sunrise Pond.
A second on, in, on, in regards to the picnic tables. For people with mobility issues, if they're in a wheelchair, how do they access that?
Good question. But then, if we put chairs, it will, it will hinder where our, all the picking.
Is it just a possibility that one of those seats could be just swung to the side?
Yeah, we can, uh, we can, um, uh, remove one of the panels.
Or you could have the four, like Counsel Ballas is suggesting, or suggesting, and it would just have an arm that would open for mobility, right? Something like that, if you like the, the look of that.
Sure, we can look into that.
We, we can see what options are available.
Sure. Counsel Evans?
Uh, yeah, I agree. You could do something. You could probably even cut the ends off of two of those benches to shorten them up and you may have enough room to, uh.
That's right.
Uh, but I've, I'm wondering, uh, is it just the central pedestal that's supporting this thing?
That's right.
I've, I would be, so are you going to put like a cement pile in the ground and then hook that central pedestal to that?
That's right. We bore, uh, a big foot.
Uh, yeah, footing underneath there.
And then, um.
Boy, I'd still be concerned about kids jumping on those things and the, the twist that they could generate on that central.
So, uh, we looked into different designs. They were quite expensive. Um, this was fitting into our budget plus the installation. The cost of this whole thing, assembly and the installation with the cement pouring and everything, it was fitting into twenty thousand budget.
So, so two thousand a piece would get you this, this table and the footing and them installed?
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty good. One, one suggestion, question? Um, I know that, uh, do, do we have a welder on staff?
No.
No, I, okay. I, I'll, all I was going to suggest was that in the neighboring municipality, uh, every year they build about ten, fifteen, get their welder to weld it. It's a pretty simple design. And they get their, excuse me. They get their summer students to, uh, bolt all the wood to them and stain, stain all the wood and bolt it to the frames that they've made. Um, you know, I, I don't know if there's an interest in, in looking at that, looking at their design and seeing if we can get them done cheaper. But that's a, that's more or less a standard shape of a picnic table, which also gives you the opportunity to have, um, people with mobility issues, a, a wheelchair at either end as opposed to the, the table surrounded.
So why we were pushing because, uh, there is a lead time and we thought that there, I mean, summer is coming. We should order it as soon as possible. Otherwise, we are also preparing the beautification plan, which will, we will bring the other components to it. Um, well, we can go back and look into the other designs and.
And is this a local company building these?
No, I don't think so. It is from catalog.
Oh, because it would be, I mean, in my opinion, it'd be nice to be using somebody local, right? Whether it is our partners at the county that we're using or there's lots of welders and, you know, I think entrepreneurs out there that could put us together a picnic table, my suggestion, rather than sourcing it from a catalog.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think, you know, if you wanted to take the, take the time to, to run over and talk to those folks, uh, you could see the, the design that they have. It's pretty basic. And I'm sure that you could, you could measure up all the pieces and give that to a, to a shop here in town. They could weld you all the frames and then, uh, you just, again, you could, you could get some, some labors, uh, as soon as they arrive, um, to stain all the wood and, uh, bolt it on. It's all carriage bolts, right?
This is with the county?
Uh, yeah, the county's designed. I, I just use that as an example. But I think if you just went over, measured all the pieces, uh, took that to a, to a, uh, fabricator here, a welding shop. They could cut all the pieces, weld it all together for you. You guys could just bolt on the, on the wood afterwards. And I think I would prefer a table that is, uh, w- without that, that, that central support. That, that really worries me. If you get four or five kids standing on one side of that thing messing around, jumping up and down, I'm not sure how strong that central, e- even with the footing underneath there, it's only as strong as the, as the, the, the bolts that are attached to that flange in the center there. And that's going to be a lot of, a lot of torque there. And if we, if we break them suckers or rip them out of that footing, then that means pulling the whole table out of there, redoing the footing. Uh, whereas if we just do like a standard, more standard table, we have the opportunity for those wheelchairs to come in and we won't be busting it up, even if we, you know, attach them to the ground somehow so they can't move them. Uh, at least they can't all jump on one side and twist the thing right out of the ground. Just my opinion.
For that, Mr. Osmond?
Um, so i- if we, we get the direction today, I mean, I think Abbott was hoping that we could talk about the locations a bit more.
Let's talk about the location and then we can get some details on.
If council decides to provide the direction for us to relook at the procurement of the tables, um, design source, all of those things. Because we've, we've gone through that process, um, so we, we can, we can go again and look at some other things. Uh, but it, there could be an issue with project delays at this point. Um, so.
I think until we reach out, yeah, no. I mean, we even have school that does welding and construction, right? I think it would just, it's definitely worth, if we can use local and support, then let's, let's do that, right, or our partners.
Yeah, and, and part of our procurement process is to look at local options. Um, and so I don't know that we looked at, um, bringing a design and having them fabricated, but we would have looked at all the, the local options as well. Um, so, I mean, we can certainly do that, but at this point, we've, we've gone through that procurement process. Um, and so we're.
I thought Abbott said.
We've got a bunch of work in. Yeah, okay.
All right, moving on to the locations, um, Sikura Park and Sunrise Pond. Are we okay with that?
Yeah. I guess, yeah, just keep going through them all.
Rotary Park and Little Lions Park. One over there, two over there. McKenzie Park and Ivan To Park. One and one. Wayfinder Location, Sunrise Park. So Wayfinder Location, you know, where the, uh.
Beach volleyball?
No, the, where the McDonald's is.
Oh, yes.
We will have that. Two over there and one in the Sunrise Park. That's it.
Okay.
Ten locations.
Ten locations. Okay, so, uh, if there's no other questions, what we're needing is we're needing, uh, would you have a question? Okay, Counsel Sheriffs?
Um, uh, is there a plan to put one or maybe two in front of the library here?
In this proposal, there is done, but if you, if, if council wants, then we can certainly look into that and drop one of those over there.
I thought maybe that would be a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, there's two at the, the Wayfinder, I think you had. Maybe take one from there and put one here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Volleyball park is, the beach park gets used all the time.
Especially in winter. Yeah, no, just a suggestion. I, I'd probably like to see one here in front of the building.
Yeah, that would be nice. Mr. Osmond?
Separate from the beautification projects that are in the budget, um, administration has been looking to source a couple of picnic tables for the front lawn, uh, in front of this building. Um, so they weren't included in these ten, but we are looking for some that we can install there. Uh, because we've had some interest from the public and from the staffs.
Okay, perfect. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion?
Um, sorry, uh, I just want to mention that Tom Thompson has just mentioned that, uh, in Memorial Park here, um, enforcement is going to put, uh, one picnic table over there. So there will be additional, but not from this budget.
Okay, oh, that'll be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Counsel Evans? Yes, because, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe.
I'll make the motion that, uh, council approves the proposed locations for the new picnic tables and, uh, and, uh, will wait for administration to bring back any new design proposals. Do I even need to include that or you just want to approve the locations?
Uh, so the, the standard practice would be for, once we have the approved budget for administration to move through that procurement process without bringing back. So if council wants to see designs to approve picnic tables, then we should include it in the motion.
So I guess the question is, do we want to see the design or do we just want to go ahead and let these folks do their jobs?
I think that's, I think. See a design.
Yeah, I think I, I would like, I definitely want to trust it or administration to do the job, but I also want to ensure that we're using, you know, local contractors when we're constructing these. That's the only thing for me, right? So.
Okay, so I'll leave the motion the way it is and then you can bring it back and tell us what you're going to build and who you're going to get to build it. Is that fair?
Sure.
I know it's a little, little over detailed.
Little hands-on, but.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. If there, uh, any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Um. Yeah, we didn't need to unamend the location. Rob has picnic tables, um, coming or looking sourcing for the front. And then Tom has for Memorial Park an additional as well. That's not part of the proposal. Okay, there's a motion on the table. I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving along to nine point seven, our closed session. Is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed? Counsel Gomana, all in favor? That is carried at eleven twenty-four AM.